Hello and welcome to this regular Eureka City Council meeting. I was waiting for you to have a seat. September 2nd. Appreciate everybody being here. And we will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land of Eureka rests on, is known in the Wiat language as Jerujiji. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And with that, could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Molton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche is absent. And Mayor Burgel.
Here. And would all who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And do we have a report out of closed session, Attorney Black?
No reportable actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to mayor's announcements. Gosh, I'm sorry. Dais Park grand reopening with project manager Prasker. Welcome.
My name is Robin Prasker, environmental project manager with the community services department. And tonight, I'm very excited to show you pictures of the park and announce the grand opening. But for folks who may be watching at home and haven't received all the updates you've received over the years, Dais Park is the previously known 2030 park. And that is located off Boone and West Henderson, off California Pine, Summer Union. It's tucked back there between a lot of neighborhoods. And it did undergo a renaming process as part of the improvement project, working with the community on multiple surveys in the Wiat tribe, where we landed on Dais, where the cypress are, for the many cypress trees in the park. So we've been under construction for just over a year, and we are so close to being done, and I mean so close. So we will start with the photos of the custom egret playground. And we have our rubber safety surfacing in different fun colors. The rear side of the egret is accessible by ramp. Another shot of the epic egret playground as well, and some of our landscaping that complements it. We have a belt swing set. A companion swing set where you can face each other, sitting with child, or friend, or whoever. We have a fun spinner. The only photo I have is us on it. But you can roll a wheeled device on there. It's missing a bench, so then you can roll in and lock in and then spin. We have a two to five toddler area. We have a small crab slide and two little rockers, a dolphin and a seahorse. We also have a cool rope spinner. And then this is another close up of those water-themed animal rockers. We have two barbecue areas. This is the barbecue area facing north, looking at the playground and north parking lot. The barbecue areas feature picnic tables, barbecues, and a utility table to prep and serve on. This is our other barbecue picnic area on the other side of the playground. And then we have a parkour course and some nice native landscaping. Lots of open space and nice grass to hang out on for some more passive enjoyment of the park. And you can see our two big cypress trees there. We also have a fitness area, which is new for us in our parks, so we're really excited to see how folks utilize that. We also have a brand-new restroom. It's got four single-use, gender-neutral stalls. And then we have a beautiful park sign to welcome you. And that blank wall behind the park sign is going to be a mural. We're going to do a community mural during the grand opening where you can come and paint on it. It'll be traced out, and you'll be told what color goes where. And spoiler alert, it is egret-themed. We also have our hydration station, and we got these cool, custom-made bike racks locally that are salmon. And then our sports court that we're still putting finishing touches on, we have a half-court on the outside for basketball and wall ball. And then inside, we have two full-court basketball courts, and then a full court for footsault and/or roller hockey. It's a big court, lot of concrete. Here's another view. And another view, more bike racks on that side of the park, and then our other parking lot. So there's parking on the north and south side of the park. And then, of course, what we've all been waiting for, when are we opening? Saturday, September 13th. We are going to have hosted activities from 12 to 3:00, but of course, once the fences come down, open from dawn to dusk every day. We're going to do a ribbon cutting at 12:30, and then we'll be giving away free ice cream treats. And then we'll have that community mural on that blank wall. We'll put some lawn games out on the lawn. And then some friends from the roller hockey and footsault groups will do some demos. Those sports might be newer to folks in our parks, so we want to make sure that folks see how the sport works, know who to get in touch with if you want to get involved in the leagues. And then we'll do a self-led scavenger hunt, just to hunt around the park and get familiar with it. And then parking is going to be limited. We're expecting a lot of people, so we're definitely encouraging folks to walk, bike, or take the bus to the park. We also are working with the Coalition for Responsible Transportation to do a bike valet, so that if we do get a lot of bicyclists, we can handle a large amount of them. And then there is a bus stop right outside the park on California Street in Dallas and the Gold Route. So if you have a way to get to the park without a car, that's going to be best for the whole neighborhood, we think. So I will stop there. That's the photos and updates we had, and see if there's any questions or comments.
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Bauer.
Can't believe it's finally done. It's awesome. Thank you. I just was wondering about the combo court, right? How are we going to, you know there's going to be some conflict, like, hey, I want to play basketball, I want to play footsault. What, how are we going to deal with that?
Yeah. We're definitely interested in maybe setting days and times for sports. I think we kind of want to see how it's used and make a decision from there, but that's something we've talked about. We were also hoping that with the half-court basketball on the outside, that would be a way that folks could come shoot hoops if maybe a footsault game is going on inside. But also, the nature of parks is it's a shared space, right? So be nice, first come, first served, and all of that. And then also, if either of any leagues or groups want to potentially rent the park or work on days that they'd like to do organized activities, we're open to those conversations, too. So we have the Humboldt Hockey, the Timberwolves team, and then footsaults ran through Humboldt Soccer. So those are folks we're partnering with during the grand opening and can talk with them a little more about schedules and programming and making sure we reduce that conflict, because you're right, it could be there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you. Thank you for putting this together. I know this has been in the works for what feels like quite some time, but it's only been about four years, maybe? I mean, just from design to completion, where it's at, correct?
Yep.
So I mean, that's fantastic, because I consider that pretty expedient for
Thank you.
For the design and for the labor, everything that goes into this type of project at a municipal level. I know you touched on the point of there being some local work done. Are you able to put that into like, a percentage? I know we're not able to do everything locally, but are you able to convey like, how much work or material we were able to use locally?
That's a great question. With regards to the general contractor who built most of the park, as you know, the public bidding process is lowest bidder, who checks the boxes of bonding and licenses, is awarded the project. So how much materials they source locally, we'd have to ask them that. But there were a few items we took control of, like the bike racks, which we were able to source locally. So I don't have an answer in the moment, but that could be an interesting calculation, because I know, being an out-of-area contractor, they were staying locally, right? So we have the room and board and, as well. So no answer in the moment, but I think it's worth looking into.
Right. There's still a benefit to us one way or another, and it's just trying to not codify it, but communicate that in a way so that people know that it's like, we're not just sending money outside of
Right.
Eureka, but even if we're able to keep it in the Humboldt area in some way. So I appreciate that, and thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Molton.
Thank you. Thank you for the update and the report, and thanks to all of the staff for the work that has gone into this. I know it has been many years and a lot of creativity and a lot of engagement with the community, and it's just stunning, absolutely stunning. I can't wait for folks to get out there and play on it. But I did a question. I was curious about the baseball field.
Oh, yes.
If you could touch on that, and then maybe the bigger picture of, we've got this one now, and the one at Carson Park, and the one at Highland Park is looking really good. What's up for the potential for more baseball in Eureka?
Yeah. Okay, and I did mean to touch on the ball field, I forgot that. So it's not quite photo-ready yet, because we're still chipping away at it. It is, right now, used by Redwood Empire Little League, and their season isn't starting yet. But upgrades we have made and are still working on are brand-new bleachers on both sides, repairs to the dugouts. We did two new ADA-accessible entryways. We did some facade work on the wall. And then we've done some irrigation work and lots of new fencing. So it's not as sparkly and shiny as the main park, but a lot of work has gone into it, and we're going to continue to work on it in the fall. And then, what is in store for baseball in the future? That's a great question. The best answer I have in the moment is that Cooper Gulch's master plan does identify those fields as being big opportunities to host more sports, with some renovations that could address the water issues in that park. We believe that would be a great spot for more sports activities and possibly multi-sport. That is the only upcoming project that I can think of right now that would address baseball, unless you have any other questions. Maybe it'll trigger something in my memory.
No, I'm just waiting for, you know, big Little League tournaments in the area. I just want to shout out to some of the less sparkly improvements, like we saw at Highland Park recently, that some of those infrastructure things where it's like, now we've got a solid fence, now we've got bleachers that grandma can actually get up on while she's watching somebody play, now we've got, you know, multi-painted courts. So anything like that just makes the parks more useful, even the stuff that isn't giant sculptural bird
Right.
are much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So the date again is September 13th.
Great.
We hope to see everybody there. All right. And with that, we will start with our proclamations. Our first proclamation is National Day of Service. Is there anyone here to receive that report? And that's with Councilmember Molton. Thank you.
Thank you. A City of Eureka Proclamation in Recognition of National Day of Service, September 28th, 2025. Whereas the City of Eureka recognizes the importance of civic engagement, volunteerism, and community service as essential to a thriving, resilient, and compassionate community. And whereas, the National Day of Service initiated by the General Federation of Women's Clubs serves as an opportunity for people across the nation to unite in projects that strengthen and uplift our communities. And whereas, the Eureka Women's Club, in partnership with the California Federation of Women's Clubs, the Jennifer Bushnell Memorial Fund, Humboldt Domestic Violence Services, and other local organizations, will host a Day of Awareness and Action, focusing on domestic violence, violence against indigenous women, and human trafficking. And whereas, domestic violence and human trafficking are grave violations of human rights that have deep and lasting impacts on victims, families, and the community. And raising awareness is a vital step towards prevention, support, and justice. And whereas, the City of Eureka stands in solidarity with survivors and honors the work of advocates, service providers, and community members, who are committed to creating a safer and more just society for all. And now, therefore, I, Katie Molton, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim September 28th, 2025, as National Day of Service in the City of Eureka, and I encourage all residents to participate in service activities, educational programs, and community initiatives that strengthen our bonds and advance justice, safety, and compassion for all.
And so we have another proclamation for National, or excuse me, for Coastal Cleanup Month with Councilmember Castellano.
Great. Thank you. The City of Eureka Proclamation in Recognition of Coastal Cleanup Month, September 2025. Whereas the state of California has a varied coastline of sandy beaches, rocky shores, productive estuaries, marshes, tidal flats, urban areas, and harbors. And whereas the marine environment is one of the most valuable resources for recreation, tourism, fishing, and other coastal activities. Coastal protection is a responsibility shared by residents, the business community, and public institutions. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center is the Humboldt County Coordinator for the 2025 Coastal Cleanup Month, taking place every weekend in September, during which hundreds of people will clean beaches, rivers, streets, estuaries, and watersheds throughout Humboldt County. Collecting trash upriver and in urban areas helps prevent plastics and other debris from accumulating in ocean and marine habitats. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center's Adopt a Beach began in Humboldt County over 40 years ago, and is now celebrated throughout California and around the world. Last year, Humboldt County volunteers picked up over 1,500 pounds of trash from our shoreline and coastal region. And whereas residents can be proud that year after year, Humboldt County continues to be among the state's leaders in the number of volunteers who help keep our ocean, rivers, and coastline clean. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Eureka City Council and Mayor Kim Burgel, I do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Coastal Cleanup Month, and encourage individuals, businesses, service groups, and public institutions to safely hit the beach, streets, and watersheds to jointly promote a healthy and productive coastal environment.
Oh, great.
Oh, there we go. NEC?
Thank you for being here.
Hi, thank you for having us. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for recognizing and proclaiming September as Coastal Cleanup My name's Sable, I'm with the NEC. And Coastal Cleanup Month has become an international affair and one of the largest volunteer events in the world. And it started right here in Humboldt, at the North Coast Environmental Center. Each year, we serve as the county coordinator with the California Coastal Commission, and we work with local nonprofits, community members, and hundreds of volunteers to pick up thousands of pieces of trash across our coastal region. Locally, we've turned Coastal Cleanup Day into a month-long event in order to foster ongoing stewardship, as well as create more opportunities for everyone to join. We hope that all of you can come and join us, and if you'd like to learn more about the events, the history of Coastal Cleanup Month, and how you can support our ongoing efforts, you can visit our website at yournec.org/costalcleanupmonth. Thank you.
And again, thank you. And that will take us to our final proclamation, Co-Central 75th Anniversary Celebration Proclamation. And we do have Christian Hill here to receive that report with Councilmember Fernandez. Come on up. Thank you for being here.
City of Eureka Proclamation in Recognition of 75th Anniversary Co-Central Credit Union. Whereas Co-Central Credit Union was founded in 1950 with a mission rooted in service, integrity, and the belief in people helping people. And whereas, for 75 years, Co-Central has been a steadfast partner to individuals, families, and businesses throughout the North Coast, fostering financial well-being and community growth. And whereas, Co-Central has demonstrated a lasting commitment to strengthening the communities it serves through charitable giving, volunteerism, and innovative financial services. And whereas, the credit union's continued investment in its members, employees, and local neighborhoods reflects a deep legacy of trust and shared values. And now, therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim, recognize, and commend Co-Central Credit Union on the occasion of its 75th anniversary, and extend sincere appreciation for its ongoing contributions to the prosperity and vitality of our community.
Thank you very much. Article 850, 75.
Oh, my microphone is not on. Green light on a base.
Right there. There it is, green light. Yeah, 1950, 75 years ago, we've been serving the counties of Humboldt, Del Norte, Trinity County, 80,000 members. This 75th anniversary celebration is an opportunity for all of us in the community to come together and celebrate that longstanding legacy, but it's also an opportunity that we're taking to introduce a new brand and a new logo. So we're going to have a special celebration at our main Harrison member service branch next Tuesday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then there'll be other celebrations on the 9th and the 10th of next week at our other member service branches, with special gifts and recognition for that 75 years and the new brand. So we invite anybody who's not a member, all of our members, please come by, our MSBs, to take part in that celebration. We've got a new website, we've got new giveaways, all sorts of new logoed items to give to our community and to our members. So thanks so much again for that special recognition and acknowledgement on behalf of our board of directors, our president, and all of our members. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. And this will move us to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Time allotment for public comment on non-agenda items is a maximum of 30 minutes shall be allotted to receiving public comments at the initial public comment period. If necessary, an additional period shall be allotted to public comments after city manager reports, but only if the first 30 minutes of public comment period was not sufficient to allow those who wish to speak to do so. The public will also be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. At the time an item is considered, the mayor will ask all those attending to line up on both sides of the council chamber, raise their hands, and for a remote to use star nine on the telephone if they wish to address the council. The maximum amount of time for each person to speak and the total amount of time allotted for each item will be determined based on the number of people indicating an interest in speaking and the amount of business to be conducted on the agenda in certain circumstances and when necessary to ensure a full opportunity for public input. The mayor may adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted for each speaker. So, come on up, Mr. Parr.
Gladly.
Hello.
It's been so long. This is almost like an addiction, you know? It's like if I'm gone for a little while, it's like I start getting withdrawals, so anyways, so I grew a beard and got a cane and came down here to express my curmudgeonly views one more time. I had something else in mind that I was going to talk about, lots of things, because it's been a while, and every time I turn around, you guys are doing some other crazy stupid thing. So a lot of stuff's built up, but since I walked in on the middle of a presentation, you guys all pat yourself on the back for that park out back of my house. And I wanted to say, oh yes, it's beautiful as hell. I mean, it's really beautiful, especially on the California street side. You look in there, and it's like, wow, it's like a monument to some designer's ego. But that's kind of why I got a cane, I twisted my knee going out there. I go out there on a regular basis, and matter of fact, Robin, it was cute as hell. She thought she was all that and a bag of chips, and she ordered me off the property the other day. But I go out there on a regular basis and check it out, and just to flip off your big brother pole out there that tells everybody you're trespassing and get off the property. Anyway, so I've been checking it out and looking at it, and it's like, okay, so the old park had things that kids liked to play on, and most parks should really have things that kids liked to play on. And I'm just wondering, for $6.4 million, and it wasn't four years, it was six years ago that y'all got the money, $6.4 million, six years of work, and at the current time, we have a unusable baseball field, completely unusable. It's got new bleachers, it's got new fences, it's got a mural, but there's no way anybody can play baseball on it. The kids play, the play route equipment, I went out there and I was like, okay, this stuff might be fun for somebody with a two-year-old or something that wants to slide a kid down a six-foot slide, or swing them on little tiny little swings or something, but there's no playground equipment out there that's even remotely interesting or challenging to an older kid. And I was just like, who designed this thing, you know? We got a big old beautiful steel egret, which of course, there were, you know, there were never any egrets in that area. And so I've been talking, I mean, I didn't really want to say much about it, but now that the thing's over, so I've been talking to the workers out there on a regular basis. And you all got $6.4 million, nine, or five years, six years, however long it was. The bid went out for $4.8, and then it's supposedly gone up to $4.2 million to the contractor because of value engineering, whatever, which is a nice word of saying, refixing the problems you created. So where's the other $2.2? I've asked for an accounting. Where's the other $2.2 million for this park that's basically worse than the old one? Prettier, but not as fun.
My name is James Stil. Thanks for allowing me to address the council. I have a statement and a few verses, so here we go. Behold the Lamb of God, who takes away the sin of the world. Jesus didn't come into the world to condemn the world, but to save the world. Jesus didn't die on the cross to send you to hell, but to send you to heaven. He's not mad at you, He loves you. But the Bible says in Romans 6:23 that the wages of sin is death. So if you die in your sin, you'll go to a real hell. If you die living a life of immorality, addiction, rebellion, lying, or whatever else is contrary to God's Word concerning a life of sin, you won't make heaven. But that's not God's plan for your life. The Bible also says, "The gift of God is eternal life. Therefore, God's heart is to give you the gift of everlasting life. He wants to redeem you and set you free. So I implore you by God's grace, turn from your sin and repent. Come to Christ, and He will set you free. He loves you and wants a relationship with you, so give Him a chance. If you move towards Him, He will run towards you." And the verses I have are 1 Timothy 2:1-4. I urge you, first of all, to pray for people, ask God to help them, intercede on their behalf and give thanks for them. Pray this way for kings and all who are in authority, so they can live a peaceful and quiet lives marked by godliness and dignity. This is good and pleases God, our Savior, who wants everyone to be saved and understand the truth. I am praying for you guys, councilmembers, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I really enjoyed, thank you. My name's Misty. I really enjoyed that you guys are making improvements on the city. The park looked beautiful. It's exciting. And the 28th, whatever that day was called, that's really exciting. I'm a volunteer at the Pregnancy Care Center, so I have a really big heart for people who are survivors of domestic violence, and it's really good that you guys are doing things like that. I'm a survivor myself, and it's a good thing. But I really want to read this. I wrote a poem today, and it's just about some things that have been discussed here recently, and kind of in the realm of what you guys are trying to do with the city. I called it, "What Do You Say?" I hear the cries, the desperate cries for lives on the other side of the world, when the very same eyes never waste a tear or a minute of their time on the lives of the people that are probably right outside of here, drowning their sorrows, because nobody cares, because nobody has dared to show them love. So how is it that, how is that any better than corrupt leaders or war mongers? If death is right here on the sidewalk, on the boardwalk, even on your doorstep, why should anybody care what you think or do what you say?
Thank you. Come on up. Hello.
Hello. I'm here to report a very serious problem in Eureka. This is a clear and present danger. Imagine a gun pointed to your head, but you don't know when they are going to pull the trigger. That is an analogy of what these people are facing from the first incident that occurred August 8th here in Eureka last month. And escalated with an additional incident last week. This person needs to be removed from the streets of the City of Eureka and state. Unless this person is arrested, their actions would be an incredible loss, national news, possibly, and the loss of life. Your police force is very well aware of I have to be very careful to protect people and that's what I do. I try to solve problems. This town is in chaos. If this happens, you will lose the city. People will leave. If this happens, I leave personally. And I wish you could fix this. You have the resource to arrest, there's enough evidence to, overwhelming evidence. Apparently they haven't put the pieces together properly, just common sense, which is dead here in Eureka. I mean, you had Canafest on the bay, you had kids there, 18-year-olds can buy pot. You've got, the town's gone to pot. You're promoting drugs that are harmful and you legalize magic mushrooms. That may be involved in the Asian crash because they affect you for a period of 24 hours where a guy reached up, the co-pilot turned the engines off. An incident a few months earlier, they stopped him from, he was on magic mushrooms. So please gain sanity here or these people that have the gun to their head, they're forcing them insane. An officer from Eureka said, I need to get some sleep. They're not concerned about the people that may be dead. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anyone on Zoom, Shannon?
Jay Doe. Unmute, please.
Good evening. You have policies in place to prevent what happened to me and you chose not to enforce them. APD advised me May 27th, rather than submit his videos and expose myself to withdrawal to allow the city to meet its duty of care in light of police findings that had been depicted in his adult media operation on city hardware. My withdrawal did allow you to act as if his actions were sanctioned by promptly returning him to council chambers on camera and evading basic policy questions with claim that no media exists. The media you left me responsible for, created on a Samsung Galaxy S20 or S21, begins February 16th last year with your phone visibly propped up on his chest while I am not composing myself, clearly unaware I'm on camera. He told me he wasn't filming when I saw your phone held up in his hands, so I stopped asking. Subsequently, he filmed his boyfriend in my bedroom, synced the videos to Google, rewatched them for weeks before showing them off to me like, look how cute really is here, all without registering. To my horror, I was a person right there interacting with his boyfriend, naked and fully identifiable. Thus, when he declined to delete them and forfeit footage of his boyfriend, I believed him. My consent did not register in his decision-making, so I bargained just to crop my face out. Powerless, knowing my identifiable nude body was forever beyond my control on remote Google servers, and they told me it was stupid to stress about it and that it was hurtful of me to suggest he was acting without thought or care. This gave him the confidence to begin discreetly filming me engaged in adult acts with my face, as if relying on me to notice and stop him, which I failed to do. Coming to terms with the two years of his apparent oblivion to his own actions, I couldn't live knowing he'll repeat this nightmare on the next person unaware of their rights. Yet my report only affirmed my fate at his hands was preauthorized. He is free to operate without oversight. What made this okay? Deletion doesn't negate third-party licensing. Did I consent retroactively by cropping my face out under duress? Was it okay once they kept me silent through the one-year statute of limitations? Was it my fault I failed to remind him I am a person? Because I learned that's impossible. You need to already be seen as a person for them to listen to you. The only reason abuse continues is that they discover there are no consequences, not even when they film themselves in the act. Your employee on remote duty preserved footage of himself violating penal code 647J paragraph 1 with the city device police found him using for adult content creation as the only phone in his possession. And he retains admin control over every camera and system in the city. So until I can feel safe living in the city again, I will keep asking. Granted, your IT officer Derek Howard in impunity, who is responsible for what he did to me?
Do you see anyone else on Zoom, Shannon?
I do. Amy?
Good evening. Thanks for being here. Thanks for letting us speak. I wanted to, I'm for specific things, but first I just want to say the park is beautiful. Thank you so much for all of the work that went into it. It's going to be so exciting to see kids playing on that egret and working with the Wiat tribe to bring more inclusivity to the area. Just great job all around. Well done. Thank you. I, the thing that I was, you know, just coming to check in about and remind y'all is that when folks were organizing around 10:40, and I'm glad that, you know, Mayor came, you got to speak to some cities that have had it and feel that the police officers feel that those types of programs are helpful. I wonder if like the people who are experiencing them feel the same. There was a lot of talk about a committee that would bring together stakeholders, various stakeholders in the community to have a more kind of inclusive community voice about programs and work to be done to like help support people. And I guess I was just wondering what is going on with that and if council could speak to that at some point and if there are opportunities for public forums to talk about housing issues, that would be really awesome. And then I know that a strategic visioning was mentioned and I don't, I don't, I tried to go back through minutes and I couldn't see when that was going to be happening. And that brings me to wondering if Eureka could get like a, I don't know, a youth intern either at the high school or the colleges to help with social media. It'd be really cool if there was like a TikTok that would help people learn how to participate in government and just get more of the community members involved and get more variety of voices. I know it can kind of be an echo chamber, I can hear myself speaking. And so, yeah, but yeah, those are the only things, the follow-up on community connection around unhoused issues, like, yeah, maybe a town hall or something where we could actually have dialogue and discuss instead of in this like, you guys just have to sit and listen to people and can't engage in the, in the same way. I really do think that we can all work together really well to come up with some unique solutions for our special, special community. Thank you guys so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Amy.
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, seeing no one else, we will close the public comment period and move into our public hearing. Public hearings are scheduled for a time certain of 6:00 PM unless noted otherwise.
Mayor Burgele, we have council reports.
Oh.
And city-related travel.
Yes, we do.
All right. I've been schooled. Councilmember Castellano.
Sure, I'll get started. And just so, in case members of the public are wondering, strategic visioning for Eureka City Council is this coming Saturday, starting at 8:30 here in council chambers. So there will be a public comment period, but you're also, anyone is welcome to come and observe that. And I wrote some notes on what I did and now I, okay. Over the last couple of weeks, I attended, like many, several other council members attended the Cal Cities Redwood Empire Division meeting in Fortuna. I want to thank our neighboring city of Fortuna for hosting that meeting. I attended the Eureka and facilitated the Eureka Main Street Economic Vitality meeting. It's not immediately a council thing, but it's adjacent to council. I attended the Livewell Humboldt meeting, which is kind of looking at public health outcomes. And I attended, not as a representative, but for my own interests, attended the HCOG meeting, gosh, last week.
Thank you. Councilmember Malton.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Many of my two-by-two committees have been postponed or kind of moved out, I think this summer. It's difficult to get people all coordinated, but I look forward to a meeting again with Eureka City Schools as well as the Chamber of Commerce coming up pretty soon, the next couple of weeks. Thanks, Councilmember Castellano, for mentioning the Saturday strategic visioning. This is where the, in case you're not familiar, this is where the council and the electeds and the leaders of the staff really decide on what are the city's priorities. What are we paying attention to? What are we looking for funding for? What new initiatives to go for? What old initiatives to, to stop doing or to continue doing? So it's like that big picture of stuff. And if you're got big picture concerns or ideas for Eureka, this is, this is the beginning point to put those things in so that they get in like foundationally. That evening, of course, is Arts Alive, Saturday, September the 6th. Go shop local, buy a snack or just, you know, vibe, listen to music, check out some art. On September the 14th, there is a Defend Democracy Fair at Maticat Plaza and they've invited some elected officials to participate in a meet your elected booth. I'll be staffing that or I'll be there to take your questions, concerns, or if you just want to yell at me about bull bouts in traffic from 1:00 to 2:00, that's what I get the most about. And then September, I'm sorry, October the 11th, just want to put this out there, the walk is the Walk to End Alzheimer's. They're accepting teams and donations right now, so I encourage folks to, to get involved. You can go to act.alz.org and look for Humboldt and find our local page, but that's Saturday, October the 11th at the Adorni Center. And they walk through Old Town carrying flowers and celebrate the funds that have been raised to hopefully eradicate Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's in our lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
Let's see, I attended the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission meeting last week. We'd gotten a presentation from the North Coast, small business. Oh, why did I forget the rest of that acronym now? SBDC. Development Center, thank you. They spoke to us about the startup Humboldt competition that they have going on and then it looks like there's going to be an updated joint powers agreement coming to us soon. It was just a lot of archaic language in there, superfluous language wherein therein, those type of things. But it looks like we'll be updating the number of required meetings that we'll have per year. This last weekend, I attended two of our local Labor Day activities, the Workers Over Billionaires Rally at the Courthouse. It's good to see that there's still a movement out there, people resisting what they can and, you know, a lot of creative signage out there as well. And then the Humboldt Del Norte Labor Council had their labor picnic at Sequoia Park. Coincidentally enough, North Coast Environmental, Environmental Center had a table at the event and was able to recruit volunteers through that. And just over the course of about three hours from 12:00 to 3:00, saw about 300 or 300 to 400 people with some of our local electeds and, and a visit from Assembly Member Chris Rogers himself. And then much like Councilmember Malton, the Defend Democracy Fair on September 14th, I will also be there as part of a booth to meet your local electeds, though I'm sure some would prefer a dunk tank, but this is what you get. So there was also an opportunity, I met virtually with some of the folks from the California Health Collaborative and they were grateful for our city's motivation for our nitrous ordinance, or rather to ban nitrous, our ordinance for that and our ability to work on it. And we're curious further about tobacco license ordinance, which I know we're working on as well, so. And then I'm looking forward to our strategic planning this Saturday as much as everyone else.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended Friday Night Market, I think it was the last one, right? And what an amazing turnout. People were having a great time and look forward to next year getting back going. I attended a kind of a status of healthcare St. Joe, St. Joe's put on, you know, basically all the healthcare leaders in, in the community talking about what's going to happen, potentially losing, you know, potentially thousands of people in our, in our community losing healthcare due to federal action, pretty disturbing stuff, but, but I will say the community, the healthcare community is really working hard to try and make sure that people don't fall off the roll. So it was disappointing, yet encouraging at the same time, knowing there's a lot of good people trying to make sure our community has healthcare. Also attended a Rotary, put on a fundraiser for their youth exchange program. I had a great time hanging out with people and supporting youth exchange. I attended the Redwood Empire Division meeting, which was great, meeting your fellow council members from Lakeport, from all the way down to Point Arena. Great to kind of talk about what everybody's doing, how they're affected by things and really great opportunity to, to connect with our, our larger neighbors across the North Coast. Let's see, Defend Democracy Gathering, I'll be tabling at 12:00 PM. Please come by and, and just say hi. That'd be great to see you. And lastly, let's see here, I think that's it for me. Oh, and I just found out today, I was elected vice chair of the Environmental Quality Committee at Cal City, so I'm pretty excited about that.
Congratulations.
See what else we can, thanks. Yeah, stay involved in that, in that committee is really something that I think is pretty positive, so I think that's it for me. Oh, oh, I forgot one thing. And I also attended a Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting, which was pretty, actually one of the few meetings, we don't go three hours, it was like an hour, it was shocking, but it was great. Thanks.
Thank you. And so I'll just report on a few things. I too, I missed a lot of the League of Cities dinner or thing because I have a day job that I couldn't not go to, but I did get to have dinner with the folks and had really a lot of nice discussions about, it's interesting to me to always talk to people that have the similar kind of things happening in their cities and how they're dealing with things. I think it's really helpful. So that was nice. I also attended Wiat Days, which is always an excellent time. This year was very well attended, dancers from Manteca, from up north, and then of course our local dancers, always a beautiful, beautiful experience. Attended the last summer concert with, of course, the Undercores, everybody's favorite. Let's see, went to the HCOG meeting where we discussed Rena numbers, which we'll be hearing about later this meeting, which is an important thing that'll be coming forward. And then I did want to mention that Saturday, or Sunday, excuse me, Sunday was overdose awareness day and I was out of town, I was out visiting with my family, but the numbers have dropped on overdoses here locally. And I just really want to shout out, not shout out, but I just really want to make, we lose so many people and I guess what I want to say about that is that, just taking a moment to recognize that addiction is not a moral issue, it's not a moral failing, it's a disease and people die from it in our community every day, every day. And that doesn't make them bad people, that makes them sick people. And I just think it's really important to recognize that because we see them every day out in our community and I just, it's important for people to feel valued regardless of where they are in their lives. And then I just wanted to say that I will be at Maticat Plaza also. Actually, I'll be hanging out with you, Scott, noon to 1:00 down there at Maticat Plaza on Sunday the 14th. And let's see, two more things. You know, we talked about service and I really want to encourage people to go to empower Eureka. There are so many opportunities for service in our community and you get so much more out of service than just that little piece that you think you give. You get so much more. And then I would just encourage everybody to come to strategic visioning. We need, we need your input. We're a community, we all live here, we all, all of our voices are important. So with that, it's time to move on to public hearings. Shannon? All right. And our first public hearing, our only public hearing is Bayside Village Fence Replacement with Assistant Planner Baker. Welcome.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Henry Baker and I'm an assistant planner here with the city of Eureka and presenting for your consideration, the Bayside Village Fence Replacement, Modification 325 of CDP 216. The project site is city-owned property located on Hillficker Lane in the transitional housing development known as Bayside Village. The project is located in the coastal zone in the city's coastal development permitting jurisdiction.
All right, thank you Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Henry Baker, and I'm an Assistant Planner here with the City of Eureka. And presenting for your consideration, the Bayside Village Fence Replacement, Modification 325 of CDP 216. The project site is city-owned property located on Hillficker Lane in the transitional housing development known as Bayside Village. The project is located in the coastal zone in the city's coastal development permitting jurisdiction, where the city's final action on a coastal development permit is appealable to the Coastal Commission. Zooming in, we can see the project site is located near the Hicksherry Trail, city wastewater treatment plant, and Humboldt Bay Fire's training facility. In July 2021, council approved a coastal development permit for Bayside Village, a transitional housing project, with the goal of helping people build rental history and transition into permanent housing. Here's a recent photo of some of the units at Bayside Village on the bottom right. The site completed construction in July, and people are now living on site. In June, the applicant reached out with the interest of changing the type of fencing and gates along the development's frontage on Hillficker Lane. Shown on the, excuse me. Here's a picture of the existing chain link fence on the left, and on the right is an example of wrought iron style fencing proposed by the applicant, who stated, quote, "A part of transitional housing, transitioning the homeless is about generating self-respect. A transitional home should feel more like a home than a prison to help people build self-confidence when coming home. Chain link fencing with barbed wire on top does not feel like a home. This fence upgrade would provide a welcoming and respectful entrance to the facility." Because the fence is part of the original CDP, a modification is required to replace it. And because council approved the original CDP, council is responsible for hearing and deciding on the fence replacement. To approve the modification, council must find that the new fence and gates is consistent with the policies of the local coastal program, also known as the LCP, and that the modification is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. A full analysis of the findings has been provided in the Agenda summary. However, staff believes that these findings may be made and approval may be granted with conditions. Six of the original CDP's conditions apply to the new fence and have been carried forward in the modification, including construction best practices, stormwater protections, a waiver of rights to shoreline protection from sea level rise, updating the development's tsunami evacuation plan as needed, an expiration of the authorization in 2050, and the city's inadvertent discovery protocol to protect archaeological resources. In addition, two new suggested conditions have been added. The applicant will obtain encroachment permits for any work in the public right of way, and the design will conform to one of three fencing design options to prevent potential impacts to wildlife, as requested by the California Department of Efficient Wildlife. These are the fencing, the three fencing options are wrought iron exclusionary fencing with flat top and bottom rails and gaps of six inches or less, wood slat or chain link fencing, or split rail wildlife friendly fencing. These options provide additional flexibility to the applicant and will allow changes in the future without requiring the applicant to request a new CDP modification. Based on the findings and the analysis provided in the Agenda summary, staff believes the proposed modification may be approved as conditioned. Therefore, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving the application. I have a suggested motion when you're ready. The applicant, myself, and Director Kenyon are here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Fernandez.
So I know what they're requesting is for the wrought iron fencing, and they're going to leave in place the cyclone fencing on the sides, is that correct? Or, sorry, the, yeah, that's the only way I can imagine, chain link, thank you, on the sides.
The chain link cyclone fencing on the sides, that's the north side and the south side, will remain in place. An additional 40 feet of wrought iron will be added at the front of each side.
Okay, and so for that chain link fencing, is there still going to be barbed wire? Or how does that look? Have they removed all of it at this point?
The barbed wire is removed at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm just curious why they want to go with that frontage portion with the wrought iron. I'm glad that they've removed the barbed wire. It does give at least a more human element to it. But why are they maintaining then the rest of it?
I believe the intent is to alter the aesthetics of the front facade along Hillficker. The fencing at the north and south sides and at the eastern side is for exclusionary fencing to prevent human and animal encroachment into wetlands.
So this does go more into an aesthetic preference at this point, then?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not against that change, I just know that the CDFW has their concerns about it. And so is that taken into account when considering this recommendation?
Yes, that's where we came up with the three options.
Okay.
The top and bottom flat rail prevents any animal leaping over the fence from being impaled or crawling under from being cut potentially. And then the gaps of six inches or less prevent any animal from being stuck inside.
Okay, that's where I was trying to make it click, was just understanding if that was the recommendation for the six inches, so thank you.
Okay, so if there are no questions, we'll open this item, open up this public hearing for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that's here to comment on this item? Seeing no one in chambers, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
So then we will close this public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see, I'll go ahead and make the motion, and I have a quick comment too. I move to adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving a modification to the coastal development permit for the Bayside Villas to replace a portion of the existing fence and install new gates for the Bayside Village Fence Replacement.
I'll second. Great. And comments?
Yeah. Thanks for bringing this forward. I think, you know, I think it's an improvement. And just so folks know, generally speaking, you know, in the City of Eureka's fence code, the code related to fences, chain link and other woven wire fence materials are not allowed between buildings and streets. And that's really specific to residential and mixed use zoning districts. So I'm just glad to see that we're, you know, bringing the same kind of fence that we would want to see in our other residential districts to this residential project as well.
Councilmember Moulton.
That's essentially what I wanted to say, just that the Betty Chin Foundation, they always, in all of their facilities strive to make it feel very much like a home. You know, whether it's Afghans on the sofas, or art on the walls, or in this case, an entrance that feels more like you're walking into your tiny home village. And I just appreciate that about the foundation.
Anything further? Please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche absent for yes votes, motion carries.
This moves us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I understand G3 is being pulled, is that correct? Yes? Okay. So can we get a motion to accept the balance?
I'll move to accept the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche absent for yes votes minus G3, motion carries.
Thank you. This brings us to G3, Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Eureka and Blue Lake Rancheria, Dock B, City Manager Slattery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have Sierra from the Blue Lake Rancheria and our Economic Development Manager, Swan Asbury, to present on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we're here to talk about an MOU between Blue Lake Rancheria and the city. They are interested in applying for a grant regarding Dock B. Thanks. So there is a U.S. Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Grant that Blue Lake Rancheria is interested in for early planning, design, and feasibility of Dock B. Just to make sure everybody's familiar with Dock B, so Dock B is owned by the city. It's in our Opportunity Zone, and it is a foreign trade zone. So it's next to the Wharfingers. When you're at the Wharfinger, it's over to the left. Zooming out a little bit, down at the bottom is Schneider Dock, and that used to be known as Dock A. And then you can see Dock B there is in the middle. And then those five dots up, kind of higher up, those are where Dock C used to be. So Dock B, you can kind of faintly see it. It's in pretty bad shape. It's condemned. It's been through a fire. It's been through an earthquake. But the pilings are still there. There's a couple hundred pilings below it, and then along the water there. So foreign trade zones have recently had some renewed interest regarding tariffs and the administration chains. So there's four foreign trade zones in Humboldt County. We have one in Eureka, and it's Dock B. So foreign trade zone allows businesses to import parts or goods, assemble or store them here, and either export them duty-free or pay reduced tariffs when they enter U.S. markets. So for Eureka, we have one foreign trade zone, and it is Dock B. So I'm going to introduce Sierra Emery from Blue Lake Rancheria. She's going to tell us a little bit about the grant.
Hi, everybody, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Sierra Emery. I'm the Director of Strategic Initiatives for Blue Lake Rancheria. Chairman Jason Ramos has sent me here today to thank you for your consideration of this item and for me to tell you a little bit about what the tribe is endeavoring. So there is a new DOT grant fund. It's the Rural and Tribal Assistance Pilot Program. Basically, these funds are available to help projects that are pre-infra and other DOT projects. So that's really money for basic things like feasibility, economic analysis, market analysis, design, and other kinds of legal and environmental planning that you might need to do, not you might, that you do need to do prior to getting to a construction phase. So you may know that the Blue Lake Rancheria Tribe has been interested in some time in maritime commerce opportunities. Obviously, there's been many conversations over the last few years in this community about what the future of port development might look like. The tribe does consider Wiggy as part of its ancestral territory, and Chairman Ramos is interested in realizing what tribal sovereignty and tribal economics might mean in a port setting. So the tribe is viewing this, these DOT funds, as a potential opportunity in collaboration with you for just getting some feasibility study money to determine what a project might look like, what kinds of activities might be fruitful and appropriate, and again, ways that we can work together to advance tribal sovereignty. So that's what is before you today, is an MOU that just states that we want to collaborate, Blue Lake Rancheria Tribe and the City of Eureka, on all things Dock B. So again, the chairman appreciates your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Fernandez.
I'm grateful for the MOU that's been put together, and I know you touched on it a little bit, but what does a success from this look like? Is it a procurement of funds? Is it just kind of a feasibility thing? What are we looking at? Because I know it only goes, at least from what it says here, until '26, so next year, and can be extended by virtue of agreement. But what is, what are we looking for from that?
I think in the short term, it really is a demonstration that both parties are willing to collaborate, and we need that for the grant application. So at a very short-term level, it's to make the grant application viable, to indicate that we have something in writing that suggests that we could think about Dock B as a potential site for port development activities. I think in the longer term, there's a lot of interesting things that we all might think about in terms of how is the city supporting tribal commerce, tribe-to-tribe trade, revitalization of the port, especially in light of recent developments. And so I think the MOU is as much as both parties can make of it, but in the short term, again, it is just for this grant application.
I'd say ideally, when processes like this in the past, when you get into this MOU, feasibility determines there's a sustainable viable port option for this facility here, and it leads potentially to a disposition and development agreement with the tribe in partnership with the city would be the ideal outcome if this feasibility determines that there is a viable option there.
Yeah, I'm grateful to at least have a better understanding of the foreign trade zone, and I'm curious if this, if the potential for that dovetails into what Councilmember Castellano has brought up before with the Economic Impact Zones. I forget what those are called, though. And I'm blanking on, again, the acronym for that.
CERC, the Community Economic Resilience Consortium.
Yeah, thank you.
I think you're thinking of the Enhanced Infrastructure Tax Financing Districts.
Yep, there we go.
Like over in Simole, is that what you're thinking of?
That's the one, yeah.
Okay.
But I say that because I know you've brought it up before, and I'm curious if those two, if there's any connection there between...
There currently isn't a connection. However, I think that's the beauty of the feasibility study is we want to know all the opportunities.
No, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Sure. So from here, if you approve the MOU tonight, they will then submit the grant application, I think September 8th is when they're aiming for. And then we'll be continuing to collaborate on Dock B planning and redevelopment. And if you're ready, I do have some suggested motion language for you.
Great. Thank you. And so now we will go ahead and open this item up for public comment. Actually, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one in chambers, do you see anybody online?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you for bringing that back. I will move to approve the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Eureka and Blue Lake Rancheria Regarding Collaboration on the Planning, Design, and Potential Redevelopment of Dock B.
Second. Okay, any further comments?
I'll just, yeah, I'll just say quickly that I'm looking forward to this relationship between us and the Blue Lake Rancheria Tribe and the potential for reciprocity there, so.
Thank you. Please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche absent for yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, and this moves us to Legislative Action Correspondence. Nothing at this time, which also moves us to future agenda items. Okay, seeing none, that takes us to City Manager Reports with City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a presentation on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, allocation, excuse me, that is passed down through HCOG, the Humboldt County Association of Governments, and we work with our neighboring communities to distribute that. And we figured a good idea would be to bring this to council to give kind of a briefing on what those numbers are and what they mean, and what the next steps are as it relates to HCOG and the city's involvement in this process. And so we have Director Kenyon here to have a presentation on that.
Thanks, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. This presentation is going to be about RENA, why it matters, and how it affects Eureka. And I'm going to start with the current sixth cycle as an example before talking about the upcoming seventh cycle. So California requires all cities and counties to plan for the housing needs of everyone in their community. Each city and county does this through a housing element, which is part of the general plan. The state requires a comprehensive update to the housing element on a regular cycle, currently every eight years. All the cities in Humboldt County and in the unincorporated county are on the same cycle, so the same update schedule, and the current planning period is known as the sixth cycle, and it runs from August 31st, 2019 through 2027. So every eight years when we update our housing element, the state tells the Humboldt County region how many net new housing units we need to plan for during that cycle. For the current sixth cycle, the state allocated the Humboldt County region arena of 3,390 net new dwelling units, so a goal of constructing that many housing units between August of 2019 and 2027. HCD not only allocates a total number, but they also divide that number into income categories to ensure housing is developed for all economic segments of the community. And so here were the income category distributions given to us by the state for the sixth cycle, which is the current one. And then, once we get that total number, the Humboldt County Association of Governments, the Humboldt County Association of Governments, or HCOG, as the regional planning agency, is responsible for allocating that total arena to individual jurisdictions within the region. So for the sixth cycle, HCOG allocated Eureka 952 of the 3,390 net new units needed regionally. And this was based on Eureka having 36.8% of regional employment and 19.4% of regional population. HCOG averaged those two percentage to give us 28.1% of the arena. Like the countywide allocation, the city's sub-allocation is divided into income categories. This is our city's fair share of the region's projected housing need. So to recap, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, determines the housing need for the whole region. HCOG allocates that among the cities, seven cities and unincorporated county. And then it's our responsibility, the City of Eureka's, to adopt a comprehensive update to our housing element to plan for that allocated number of housing units. RENA doesn't mean the state builds the units for us or that the city has to build them ourselves. It means we must plan for them by showing that our zoning, land use policies and programs can accommodate that level of housing demand. So the city's 2019 through 2027 housing element was adopted on December 3rd of 2019 and then we had to submit it to HCD for approval and certification, which occurred in March of 2020, as being in substantial compliance with housing element law. So as we are still working our butts off to implement all the programs in our current sixth-cycle housing element, planning for the seventh-cycle update has started, which will cover June 30th, 2027, through July 15th, 2035. On July 15th of this year, HCD released the new numbers for our region for the seventh cycle. And now HCOG is currently working on a method for distributing the new numbers. Tentatively, they're scheduled to select a tentative methodology on September 18th at their board meeting and then hold a public hearing at their October board meeting, followed by a 60-day public comment period with approval of the allocations in December and submit it to HCD, who will then have until February of 2026 to approve the allocation plan. And then Eureka and the other cities and county will have until July 15th of 2027 to adopt our new housing elements. So for the seventh cycle, the state has given us, as a region, a arena of 5,962 net new housing units. This is 2,572 more units from the last cycle, or a 76% increase. And I'm showing the last two cycles on here for comparison's sake. So how did we get this number? I'm going to do my best to quickly explain this, so I'm going to miss some nuances, but I have HCD's Determination Letter and calculation workbook for anyone who is interested in getting more in the weeds. The Department of Finance, they look at a bunch of data to get a population projection for 2035 of 127,149 people in Humboldt County. This number subtracted the number of people living in dormitories. They're not counted. And then they crunched data on projected household size to translate that projected population into a projected household number. So they are estimating that those people will be divided amongst 58,396 households, which equates to 2.18 people per household. And then the state estimates that there are already going to be 58,131 existing occupied housing units in Humboldt County in 2027 at the beginning of the seventh cycle. So subtracting existing occupied housing at the beginning of the cycle from the projected need at the end of the cycle, it appears that Humboldt County just needs 265 net new housing units by 2035 to accommodate new demand for housing. So why is our arena not 265 units? It's, according to state statute, HCD adds a bunch of adjustments to this base number to accommodate for various things. The first adjustment here adds 58 units to account for a replacement of existing units that will be demolished during the planning period. The rest of these adjustments that I'm going to discuss are about addressing existing pent-up demand for housing in the area. So the second adjustment adds housing units based on the most recent county homeless point-in-time count to account for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. HCD applied the household formation rate percentages, that 2.18 people per household, to translate the total number of people experiencing homelessness into the need for 769 new dwelling units. And this is a new adjustment that was not applied in our sixth-cycle arena. The next adjustment adds units based because our regional vacancy rate is too low to be considered healthy. And so that added an adjustment of 324 units for our owner occupied vacancy rate and 907 units for our renter vacancy rate. And then the final and largest adjustment, which again is a new adjustment for this seventh cycle that wasn't part of the sixth cycle, is based on the percent of our population that is cost burden compared to the national average. So cost burden means spending more than 30% of your income on housing. The US national average rate is that 30, about 32% of the US population is cost burdened, while Humboldt County's rate is 42%. So HCD estimates that Humboldt County would need to add 3,639 units to drive down that cost burden rate to the national average. Okay, so that's how we got to our full arena. And as I mentioned earlier, HCD doesn't just give us a total number, they give us a number by income category. And so for a housing unit to count towards a certain income category, it needs to be affordable to households in that income category, again, meaning they're not spending more than 30% of their income on housing. This table shows the current household income rates for the various income categories. There is a new income category in the seventh cycle, acutely low. This covers people who make 0 to 15%, or households, I mean, who make 0 to 15% of area median income, so little to no money. Even though our shelter space and transitional housing projects are meant to shelter acutely low-income households, RENA is a goal for permanent housing, so shelter space and transitional housing do not count towards our arena. That means we receive no credit towards our sixth-cycle arena for construction of Bayside Village and we won't receive any credit in the seventh cycle for the navigation center or any other sort of temporary housing that gets built in the city. These pie charts show the sixth and seventh regional housing needs determination for the Humboldt region by income category. Low-income housing is shown in blue and moderate to above moderate is shown in yellow. You can see that the upcoming seventh cycle is more skewed towards lower income than the current sixth cycle. So now it's HCOG's turn to allocate a fair share of these regional numbers to the seven cities and unincorporated county. As I mentioned earlier, HCOG gets to decide on the method of allocation, but this method gets reviewed and approved by HCD based on a list of codified objectives: increasing housing supply and mix of housing types, promoting infill development and social economic equity, protecting environmental and agricultural resources, and encouraging efficient development patterns, promoting an improved intra-regional relationship between jobs and housing, and balancing disproportionate household income distributions. And this is a very difficult task since these objectives can work against each other. Oh, and six, affirmatively furthering fair housing. Okay, so, and I'm going to give an example of how these can work against each other. So Criteria 2, 3, and 4 really promote housing in Eureka, where we'll get growth through infill densification rather than development of greenfields. Also, as shown on this figure on the right, we have more people employed in Eureka and living elsewhere than the opposite. So we need more housing to hopefully get more people who work here and also live here, consistent with Criteria 4. But on the other hand, Criteria 5 and 6 push housing outside of Eureka. Desegregation and reducing concentrated poverty means building more affordable housing in high-resource areas, or AKA richer areas, which tend to be in the rural county outside of city limits. As shown in the figure on the right, Eureka is comprised of census tracts that are labeled by the state as low resource, with some census tracts being so low resource that they are deemed high-poverty and segregated. Providing opportunities for more housing in high-resource areas, especially affordable housing, is essential for long-term economic mobility and also just overall empathy and understanding of differences amongst our community. But income diversity does not often happen without regulatory prompting because unfortunately, high-resource areas have historically used their economic, social, political, and legal capital to prevent additional housing from being developed in their neighborhoods. So options that are being considered by HCOG, like I said, the sixth cycle just did 50/50 jobs, percent jobs, percent employment. If we did the same thing for the seventh cycle, we'd get 1,740 units. If instead, we weighted employment more heavily than housing and we went 60/40, we would get a higher overall arena. If we added in consideration of opportunity zones, so those resource area mapping, we would get a low arena. The planning, so staff from the seven cities and counties met with HCOG planning directors and city managers and agreed to recommend the 50/50 allocation, but it will ultimately be up to HCOG to decide and HCD to approve the final methodology. So if HCOG goes with the 50/50 allocation and Eureka receives the arena of 1,740 units, that's an assignment of 218 net new units per year, which is almost double what we had last time. For the past six years, we've been averaging 44 dwelling units per year. And if you remove the deed-restricted low-income projects, 27 market-rate dwelling units per year. All right, so HCOG is proposing to address, like, affirmatively furthering fair housing by adjusting income categories within the arena allocations to work to improve imbalances in the income distributions within the region. So they're looking at the countywide average for each of these income distributions and then they're looking at the cities in unincorporated county to see how their percentages compare to the countywide average. And this data is American Community Survey five-year data, so census data. And so it's not point-in-time count data, so if you look at acutely low, Arcata has a really high acutely low-income population because I'm assuming it's students that don't have an income that are in housing and are getting counted by the American Community Survey, whereas Eureka has a lower-than-county-wide acutely low-income arena. And I'm thinking American Community Survey is missing a lot of our people that are not living in housing and are hard to survey. And so ultimately, this redistribution for Eureka means adding more acutely and extremely low-income units and removing moderate and above, well, actually, we would add moderate, but remove, adjust away from above moderate, which was a surprise to me that this works towards us getting more affordable housing to affirmatively further fair housing because the state resource maps show the opposite. So anyway, moving on. I know everybody's wondering what this means for us in our housing element compliance. In enforcing housing element law, the state's focus really isn't on the number of units that actually get built. Since that's out of our control, we are really relying on others to finance and construct the housing. Their focus is on whether we have an adequate plan, an adopted and certified housing element, and whether we are completing our plan's implementation measures, especially key measures that HCD has identified as critical to us getting our certified housing element. So we have 35 implementation measures in our current housing element and putting up 14 city-owned parcels for sale or lease to affordable housing developers, that was one of those implementation measures and it's a key one that HCD really cares about and follows up with us about to make sure we're doing. Another one was our comprehensive update to our inland zoning code, which happened. And the last key one is our update to our local coastal program. And we actually received a letter from HCD in June asking where we're at with that and we had to provide a detailed timeline for completion. So what happens if you fail to have a certified housing element or you lose certification from lack of progress? First of all, like, if you have an easy progress, or an easy time getting your housing element adopted, it's maybe like six months of dedicated time by a senior principal planner, so that's a lot of money. But if you're not getting it certified or if you have to do an amendment, that's just even more time and money, and that's an opportunity cost for the city. Also, they'll switch you from an eight-year cycle to a four-year housing element cycle if you don't get a certified housing element. There's this whole idea of a builder's remedy. I don't think that's, I think that's an overblown concern. The bigger concern is you lose out on grant money for housing and transportation. So we'd lose our pro-housing designation if we didn't have a certified housing element and the associated grant money we've gotten for rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention. We'd lose points on when we apply for housing grants and loans and we'd be ineligible for a number of funding programs that we rely on regularly. And HCD can get the state to sue us and charge us money. So how do you get to a certified housing element? As required by state law, like, our sixth-cycle housing element identifies specific sites within the city, including vacant sites that are zoned for housing and they're developable, so not covered in wetlands, and sites that have a realistic and demonstrated potential for redevelopment during the planning period. So we literally, our sixth-cycle housing element contains a list of individual parcels by APN that are suitable for housing creation during the planning period and allocates a specific number of housing units to each site by income category. This is known as our residential site inventory. And so we identified all these privately-owned properties and we said, hey, we think we can get three units on each of this one at this income level. And so in addition to that, we adopted implementation programs, including actions that need to be taken to make sites available to accommodate that share of the city's arena for each income category that could not be accommodated by the site's inventory. So because the city cannot demonstrate enough suitable, available, and appropriately-zoned sites to accommodate our very low and low-income arena, we were required to include an adequate sites program to accommodate that remaining need, which was our 14 city-owned properties. And so we accommodated 332 of our arena units, of our 952 units, using these 14 city-owned properties. So Eureka really struggles to identify adequate sites for a few key reasons. Number one, the easiest way to demonstrate compliance is to just identify vacant sites, which is counter to the state's goal of infill development. But it's hard for built-out studies because we don't have very many vacant unconstrained parcels. Because we don't have that, we need to rely on non-vacant sites and there's a higher bar for those. You have to prove there's realistic and demonstrated capacity for redevelopment. And we don't have the type of market demand that other built-out cities like Berkeley might have for that. might have for that, to really demonstrate that we, acceptable evidence. So for instance, Berkeley would show their improvement to land value ratios are like, oh, we're super ripe for redevelopment, so this will happen during this planning period, and we won't have that same type of evidence. So it's harder for us to say, oh yeah, this this site will be redeveloped or has the realistic potential to be redeveloped. And then the third reason, it's difficult to demonstrate adequate sites, is there is an assumption in housing element law that sites smaller than half an acre are not adequate to accommodate lower income housing, and 98% of parcels within Eureka are less than .5 acres in size. So, one example from the sixth cycle is accessory dwelling units. In our housing element analysis, we found we have room and appropriate zoning for thousands of additional ADUs. However, HCD certified only a goal of 20 ADUs per year in our site inventory because that was a realistic number for us, given how few we were being developed at the time, and given a number of implementation measures, we proposed to incentivize ADU development. Then when we went to amend our housing element in 2022, the ADU goal was removed entirely from our site inventory due to a lack of progress towards that goal. So how the heck are we going to demonstrate capacity for somewhere around 2,000 or more new units during the seventh cycle? We're gonna have to rely heavily on non-vacant sites with supporting implementation programs as evidence for redevelopment potential. And some of the programs will take certain forms. We can speed up housing approval processes by creating by right approval processes for more housing, getting rid of discretionary review and hearings. This could actually save the city money since we don't charge people as much as it costs us to do these hearings. Regulatory updates to make zoning more favorable for housing. We already are doing this in the current cycle, so there's less stuff to do the next cycle, but we could definitely increase floor areas and decrease minimum lot sizes even more. But this will require additional CEQA environmental review, which is gonna be expensive. We could reduce construction and development costs by reducing like public improvement requirements, so getting less public benefit out of projects to incentivize them to happen. Or we could provide financial subsidies like our ADU loan program that we're trying to get started, or by purchasing land and making it available for sale or lease to affordable housing developers like we did this last cycle. We save money by choosing land we already owned and putting it up for sale or lease, but at some point, you know, we have to think about purchasing additional land. So, you know, any any additional arena we get, we have to think about is additional time, time and money and opportunity cost, but also critical for us to put effort into developing housing. And sorry that was so long, but that's it.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you for that informative and terrifying report, I guess, is that terrifying is not the right word, but boy, howdy. I'm really proud of the work that Eureka has done up to this point, especially your department. I know that there's, making it possible and better for people to build more housing has been an effort that comes from a lot of different angles, and I just really wanted to say, going into this, that I appreciate all the work that's happened so far. My questions, my first question is about unincorporated areas. When HCOG is dividing up these arena numbers between, you mentioned the seven cities, what about, is McKinley, I know McKinleville is not a city, what about other unincorporated areas? Did they get a slice of this?
Yes, so the unincorporated county gets a portion of the arena. And then, you know, I looked at their housing element for the last six cycle, and they identified a lot of vacant sites in McKinleville, in Myrtle Town, in a lot of the areas around Eureka was where they, their site inventory located new development.
Okay. And then a question about like the tiny houses, comparing our tiny houses, which do have time limits, but they're not like, you know, my understanding is that they're not like, it's not a strict, like here, you've got six weeks and you're out. What's the difference between our tiny houses and a dorm where kids are living for one year or one semester?
Dorms also don't count towards your, towards your arena.
Oh, I see, okay. I misunderstood that you were talking about people accounting as acutely low income, potentially because there are students there with no income, but their housing that they're building there that's strictly dorms.
Won't also, yeah, it won't help Arcata point.
People needing the housing.
Yes.
But the housing they're being provided doesn't count.
Yeah, so unfortunately, like, Arcata's not gonna be able to point to the Craftsman Mall to say, hey, that's how we're taking care of our acutely low income. They're not gonna be able to do that.
Just like we can't point to the Crowley property.
Correct.
Okay. So, then just a comment, as you're talking about this, I pictured a scenario where we end up tearing down existing housing in order to build more dense housing. Do you think that's what is being encouraged here?
Yeah, they, the state anticipates that that may happen, and so you also have to, when you're dealing with non-vacant sites, you have to analyze whether there's existing housing and and take that into consideration for how many net new units you're gaining.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, thank you for the the enlightening, yeah, terrifying might be the wrong word, but onerous, responsibility, intimidating, yeah, projects that we have on the horizon there. And so, in a sense, it feels like we're being punished for having centralized industry in Humboldt, and that's in Eureka, and so, is it, is it a state issue then, is it a legislative issue? Because it feels like we're limited by the space that we have.
I think it stinks that you prove, that you have, you prove compliance by pointing to vacant sites, and that's what you need to do. Like, I prefer what we had to do for the pro-housing designation, which is it looked at what was in the city's control, you know, reducing regulatory barriers, providing financial, you know, and you got a certain number, you got points for each of the little things that you did, and then your points had to add up to a certain number of points to qualify as pro-housing. Like, I feel like instead of punishing us for where we're at in terms of, you know, how many vacant sites we have, we should be instead just, they should give us a list of things that we should do as a city to promote housing, and we should have, we should like, get a point for each one that we qualify for, and if we don't qualify for enough, we can choose other, select other things to do to promote housing, you know? And so then it would just be focused on like what, what the cities and counties are doing to promote housing and less on, yeah.
What would be realistic for us is, is what I'm trying to look at, and the fact that, you know, the Crowley property, the Blue Angel Village isn't counted, even though that is housing for someone who's in that interstitial, that interim space before they can get to something, you know, more, more permanent. And, and it's, yeah, it does seem absurd that we're not counting the dorms that are being, you know, built over in Arcata as, as any sort of permanent housing, because those students are going to be there for X amount of years. And, and again, is this a state legislative issue, or is it a policy issue? I'm trying to determine like, where is it that we can focus on alleviating or mitigating some of this? Because I don't think any of us want folks to be houseless or without a home, but it's like there's, conceptually, it's, it's a burden to try and bill that over that amount of time. So, I'm trying to understand like what is it that we can do to help shift some of this responsibility?
Yeah, HCD came to present to HCOG at their last meeting, and they were saying like, we just want to assign arena based on need, and we just want to focus on need and not on how feasible it's gonna be, and that makes sense, right? Like, it's telling us how much we need. But then I think the methodology for housing element compliance should talk to that and realize that maybe the number isn't feasible, but it's based on need, and then the, how you show that you are in compliance with a plan for that, like, takes into consideration.
Well, yeah, because it sounds like then, okay, we've identified these spots, but whether or not we build is not the issue?
No. What actually gets built is not what they care about, because it's not in the city's control.
And, and so then that, that makes me think like, yes, we still have sites that are, that are vacant, that we've outlined in, what was it, the?
Sites inventory, yeah.
Yeah, and, and so if those haven't been built on, we can't carry them over?
You can, but there's a limit on it. So, and then they ask for more evidence if it's a site that's been used in a previous cycle.
And I would also hope that that provision in there about affordable housing needing to be on larger than an acre, when we did the amendment, we had that same problem, but because Link is up and going right now, we're hoping that, rather than having, that, that we can get credit for vacant private sites, because we've demonstrated that we can build affordable housing on much smaller parcel sizes. I mean, the Link properties are less than a third of an acre.
Yeah, and that seems like a really bad idea to say, oh, just because affordable housing's only been developed on large sites, that's what we're gonna count going forward? Because we shouldn't be incentivizing that. We shouldn't be incentivizing like more distributed development of affordable housing.
Well, yeah, and I think one of the elements that you pointed to was the cost burden. Build more housing to reduce the cost of housing, so not against that. It's, yeah, okay, we want to put more out there, so it reduces the cost, kind of flood the market, if you will, but newly built housing is going to be less expensive?
No, the idea is that your overall supply will then, like, people will move into those new units that can afford them, and that will free up some other units that will then become less expensive because there'll be less demand for them.
I'm, I'm good on that note, thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you. This is, this is kind of overwhelming, you know? I guess the question that I would like someone to, or not, the analysis that I would like to see before we're given some kind of allotment at the HCOG level is, can we physically build 1,740? I mean, we have an inventory, you know, we know where our vacancies are, we know where we have existing buildings, but can we physically do it, given our space? Does anybody know that? And if we don't, we need to figure that out.
We can. I mean, we zone our downtown for 10 stories, but I've only had people pushing back against our minimum of two stories. Like, nobody's, there's no market demand for a 10-story building at this point, nobody's trying to build that. So it's hard to demonstrate that we have that potential, but we do, we are zoned for it. We're zoned to accommodate a ton of housing, especially now with the ADU and SB9 stuff.
But I think that's what's unfortunate. If you look at other jurisdictions that have the vacancy and they can say that, hey, we're just gonna point to this vacant property and it has the potential of doing that, whether that ever gets done or not, it, it doesn't. But we, we do what we can and what we can control to make it happen, but the market dictates what happens and whether or not they'll actually build it. I mean, especially when it comes to, you know, median income to above median income property, we're, we're in a really bad spot for that. If we get this big of numbers, we're looking at basically high-rise condos, and is, is there a market in Eureka, California for high-rise condos?
Well, and the, the cost in the earthquake-prone area like us to build a 10-story building, you can't do it, you know, I mean, without it being like high, you know, high-income apartments or something. So, there's all those things that need to be figured out before the state mandates that we build 2,000 units. And with, you know, grant money, is it gonna be, we're gonna need a ton of grant money to do this, so I hope somebody's thinking about that. You know, needs, because we can't do it, you know? Anyways, thanks.
Councilmember Castellano?
Sure, thank you. Thanks for the report. I have definitely been following this and in kind of conversation about it, and still, you know, to my fellow council members' concerns, kind of perplexed, you know, especially because, you know, I think those of us in the city here, council and staff are kind of solution-oriented people, and we've worked really hard to, to actually not only try to plan for housing, but to support its development and being built. And I think that's one of the things that's challenging is, you know, because we are solution-minded, it's hard to wrap our minds around like, but how can we actually do this? Because we want to succeed in, in the doing. And so, you know, for sure, I'm kind of curious from your perspective, like how we might, those of us on council, those of, those of us in the community might be best engaging around this in the next weeks or months, or is it just sort of like, just hold on to the edge of your seat and get ready, you know? And then, you know, for sure, the part of me that's already like, okay, well, let's say we have to do this, how do we do this? It's already like, I gotta start brainstorming now, you know? And so, you know, I'm kind of curious, I know that there's only a limit to like small lot subdivisions, but I was just curious if, if you could help me remember how many we've had thus far in the city of Eureka?
Oh, since we adopted the provisions for small lot subdivisions? Oh, that's a good question.
It's okay if you don't know.
It's like, a dozen.
Yeah, okay. I, I think they're cool, I think it's a cool opportunity. You know, and then, I don't think we currently allow, I know in Oakland, this is possible, but I'm just thinking of those like very low, like tiny house on wheels without an attached foundation structure, like, so like you could have a community of tiny houses on wheels, for instance. Do we allow that, or do you have to have a house attached to it?
We allow a tiny house on a, on wheels as an accessory dwelling unit, so you can only get, you know, one with your single-family dwelling. So, exploring a potential for a group of them, I mean, then it's, it's essentially an RV park, right, which we allow at that point?
I know that there's some communities of people working on those in Oakland, so I just am familiar with them. It's, it's a very like niche sort of thing. And then, I, I just did like a quickest search of, I was like, cities, you know, because I'm thinking about this, like, sites that perhaps don't have their highest and best use, that how can we promote them perhaps becoming better use for housing or mixed use? And I was, you know, just like, oh, like, looking at like, the city of New York has this participation loan program, which is basically, again, I don't know much about it yet, but it's, you know, like the city like providing loans for like rehabilitating vacant or multifamily properties for better use of housing. Again, we're definitely not there yet.
Well, I wouldn't say that. I think that the Housing Trust Fund that we have could be usable for that. Now, whether or not we have the capital necessary to make those big improvements, it may take a while, but the structure forward's in place with it.
Right, for sure. So, yeah, so again, definitely, thank you, I appreciate you, and I'll give you a chance to talk to you bringing this forward, but, you know, and want to support thinking and research, and also just like engaging in a way that's appropriate, you know, for sure, I don't want us to, you know, just be like, we can't do it, we won't do, you know, but also to be mindful of what's reasonable for our city to, to actually do, and, you know, to be engaging meaningfully with the state around it in order to be successful, so.
Yeah, that's what I, I definitely support ideas for implementation measures like you just gave, that's great. And if any in the, buddy in the community is like, yeah, I want to sell my underutilized parking lot in downtown to the city for a reasonable price, you know, that could be great for our housing element, or any other ideas that people have, and also advocating to the state for help with fund financing, and maybe they could give us some state property in Eureka for housing development. And it's, okay, I was just curious.
You know, like, because I did a quick search of like other communities that have gotten their seventh cycle, but it's that that was all last year and it was like very rural counties and and they only have like four read four units or things like that, you know? Yeah, I don't know. Maybe it was like sometimes when you search something, it's weird. But so not to say that's like a definitive answer, but are there any other communities who have recently received their seventh cycle? Counties that recently received their seventh cycle numbers? Because I'd be just kind of curious to compare.
I don't know that. I know we're super early in the process. Like, there's many communities that just got their sixth cycle completed.
Yeah, it's interesting how the timing varies across the state. Okay, I feel like that'd be something. I don't know, maybe I'm curious to analyze that.
But the the further you got in the sixth cycle, the more like the the cost burden number that got added mid sixth cycle. So we didn't get it in our sixth cycle arena. But some jurisdictions that were late in the sixth cycle got it in other parts of the state. So that's also helpful to look at other, yeah, definitely looking at other parts of the state and what those jurisdictions are doing, especially ones that are built out low market demand like us.
I know that folks from HCD were at the HCOG meeting, but do you feel like there are good ways of like just discussing with HCD this in a way that's just kind of like, hey, people to people who care about housing? Let's talk.
They're so bifurcated. They have one group that allocates arena and then another group that determines compliance with housing elements. And they're completely separate. So trying to get them to talk about housing element methodology as part of the allocation process is like a no go. But there are people to talk to for both those things. There's just not a way to talk to them about how those two things interact with each other.
And it it's like a lot of state regulations. You look at our, you know, solid waste and organics regulations that are just blanketed across the state and don't have any taken into any consideration what facilities are available, what what the what the geography, what the logistics, all of those things are not taken into account. I mean, we're we're so far different from Los Angeles than, you know, but yet we have the same parameters for a lot of different state regs.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fernandez?
You'd briefly touched on state owned properties, and I'm curious what the potential might be for that. What do we have within city limits that the state might be willing to collaborate with us on? If anything at all?
Yeah, I mean, one example that was brought to me was in San Francisco, there was a EDD parking, underutilized parking lot that the state developed into housing. And we have an underutilized EDD parking lot across from the courthouse.
So there might be a potential there. But not for seventeen hundred units.
No, there's plenty of, there's plenty of state, you know, land, like, you know, the Jacobs campus might be going to to the state. And yeah, I mean, we we could look at, that's definitely something we're gonna look at.
Okay.
I think the EDD one was somewhat that way, but it was also the state coming in and actually taking over and developing the property as well, right? We were offered that from the state, we worked with Maguire's office and looked at some of our properties to do that. There are some advantages and disadvantages to that. So you need to take those into account.
Yeah, HCD actually has a unit that's focused on developing underutilized state like property with housing. So that would be a super easy way to meet Rena if the state was willing to do it for us.
I was looking at the National Guard property. That was actually donated to the the state by the city in the late fifties and it would be very nice to have it back.
Yeah, right by the zoo and the elementary school.
Yeah. That'd be some nice advocacy.
I do believe, we tried to use that argument, the state didn't really buy into that argument, and it's with another state agency now.
Which I was gonna ask which arm of the state poo-pooed that?
Well, I mean, DGS ultimately, but at the same time, it's CCC property now.
And then I I did have like two more questions. I was curious how how unit sizes are determined. Could we just build seventeen hundred studios and the state would say, yes, that works? Or how do they parse that? How do we parse that?
Yeah, they don't. It's just a unit as a unit. For when I do my annual reporting, I, yeah.
Yeah, that's why when we looked at the first RFP for the first three properties, we had discussions about potentially looking at one proposers option that just had one site that was going to be for senior housing and it was studios and it had more density in included in that and trying to work with it. It didn't work out, but yes, you could do above market rate, market and all have them all be studios.
All right. Yeah, I'm just again, trying to understand the mentality with which they make these determinations. Last one from me. Might be considered a bit cheeky here, but how do they count RV parks or mobile home parks? Do they at all?
Yeah. Permanent permanent housing, so a mobile home park would be permanent housing. So they would count those.
Yeah, but RV parks with thirty day, with thirty thirty day leases on it wouldn't. Mobile home parks would.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano, then Molton?
Thanks. I'm sure we'll have lots of other time to discuss this, but I was curious about I remember before the the Housing Authorities repositioning project couldn't count towards our Rena because it was like Housing Authority property. Or or there are like limitations on how it was counted, but as now that it's developing more, how can we count that? Does it count?
I think we can count it.
Okay.
Yeah, and they are reposition repositioning to densify their property. So redeveloping one with more units. I just recently was contacted by them that they aren't gonna be make doing as many new units as they originally thought to, as they struggle to qualify for financing. They might be just rehabbing more units and not redeveloping.
Right. Yeah, and this is one of the frustrations, right, is that the the requirement threshold and the funding availability doesn't converse with each or match, you know, so it's like here's an opportunity to potentially build more units, but there isn't funding available to meet that need. And so we can't actually plan for anyway. Yeah, I I do feel like there's a space for some advocacy there. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Molton?
City manager Slattery actually answered my question just now, that what's the difference between a an RV park and a tiny home village and a mobile home? And it's the length of the lease.
There are RV parks that do do thirty day, and that's how we determine whether or not we get TOT. I don't think that we could count those within an RV park, even though they have thirty day leases in there, but mobile home parks would count.
I was actually just thinking about the Crowley property. And if we don't have, if we had tiny houses, even if they were in a housing first program stream, if there was a way that we could do that, that they would then count.
And that's what's really unfortunate. I can maybe understand the shelter aspect of that, not, I I don't really, I disagree with it, but I can see the logic behind not counting shelters. But when you're talking about transitional housing, especially the Bayview project where the intent the the intent is to develop a rental history and get into permanent housing. That is an ideal program that should be counted towards that. And if that was the case, maybe we could convert some of our shelter space because we have an abundance of shelter space compared for a community of our size. It's not even close. Our neighbors don't have a tenth of what we have. And if that was the case, and we could convert shelter spaces into that model like Baby Village, then even then, we couldn't still count it. So I think it's it's backwards.
Yeah, it seems like if we could adjust the way that we deal with timelines of folks being in or the zoning around it, that, I mean, it's it's essentially it's their apartments.
When I mentioned it was transitional housing, that's when HCD was like, no, you can't count that towards your.
You shouldn't have said that.
I know. I should have, I shouldn't have mentioned that point.
But the funding that we receive for that have the requirement of it being following the guidelines of transitional housing.
Thank you.
Anything further? Well, I have appreciated this robust conversation this evening. It's been really good. And with that, thank you all for being here. We're adjourned.